Evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, October 17th at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please.
Swain?
Here.
Asher.
Here.
Trustee Augustine has an excused absence. Also, our chiefs in police and fire in attendance. This time, I'd like to ask everyone to join in honoring our flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll move to approve the minutes for the October 3, 2023, regular trustee meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. Any discussion?
None.
There being none, I will, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the October 6, 2023, special trustee meeting?
That's when I was at, right? Yes. Second.
Seconded by Asher. Any discussion?
None.
None. Can I vote on this, Martha? If I was not in attendance, go watch. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the October 11, 2023, special trustee meeting?
No, I was not at that one, right? And I did not watch it. Should we wait on that one?
Uh, let's see.
We'll table that one. Thank you.
What date was that?
11, October 11.
Okay.
Ms. Cathwood?
Um. Anything business-wise, but I'd just like to let everybody know that former trustee Becky Chatton-Letzko passed the Judiciary Committee for her presidential appointment as the head of the Northern District of Ohio. She's been serving in that position as the interim director since June, I think. Dave, correct?
June, yes.
And it's quite an accomplishment. She, she will oversee 40 counties, 166 employees.
Wow.
Um, so we were very fortunate to have her. Bill my unexpired term in 2018 and 2019. She served with Mr. Burns and Ray Schulte, and it's quite an exceptional accomplishment. She will be receiving a full Senate vote as soon as they get their act.
Hometown hero, for sure.
Served the community very well in her two years here.
Thank you for recognizing her. I saw her a couple of weeks ago at the game and talked to her for a while, so job well done.
Yes.
Anything further, Martha?
That's it.
Okay, very good.
How do you top that, right?
No, yeah, well, we can all go home now. So, um, let's go to police.
I have nothing.
Nothing for this evening. Fire?
Just got a couple items here.
Oh, you just broke the roll.
I know. I'm gonna go, one that's not on here. Motion to accept the Ohio EMS grant in the amount of $1,200.
Summed.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. First is request appropriations not to exceed $850 for an oil leak from Squad 37-2 from General Maintenance Services.
I moved.
Second, discussion? What is, uh?
It's a, it's the bottom oil pan and a gasket with the, near the filter that's leaking. They said it's a common on those Ford. It's one of two spots those Fords typically leak.
Okay. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Next is request appropriations for $498 for two i- Apple iPads from Amazon paid through the EMS grant.
Summed.
Second? Nice discount there.
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
They're the, they're the nine, they're not the, the brand newest ones. They're the last, the last ones because they'll, they'll work with our, our EMS programming, no problem, or software, so.
And that was the grant that we just accepted? To keep everybody up to speed.
You guys voted on that one, right?
We did.
Okay, perfect. Request appropriations $75 for the permit to burn, uh, for a burn permit through the state of Ohio. We will be conducting another live burn, uh, November 18th and 19th, weather permitting, on 303. As I have more details, I will share. Um, we're going through the process now, but we already have the, the asbestos abatements. Uh, there's very little we have to do on the prep, unlike last year's November burn that we had spent all the time building rooms out. This one, all we have to do is pretty much take up the carpet in a couple of the rooms and get, start getting pallets and straw. We're already starting to train in the building to get reps on different evolutions inside the building.
I moved.
Second, discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our request appropriations not to exceed $500 for two four-tier industrial freestanding storage shelves from Home Depot. That's going into the new storage room we built up in the training barn. So we can start moving stuff and organizing it, and I will begin building the, uh, training side of the, the training barn.
Done. So moved.
Second, discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is, uh, Dave Rodowski is stepping down as chief engineer. He does not have the time to commit to the weekly checks and, uh, everything else that goes with it. So he's stepping down.
Any thoughts on?
I'm gonna put it out there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see. I got a couple ideas and a couple people kind of expressed their, they have some, um, mechanical background, so we'll, we'll see.
Okay. We don't have to vote on that, right? It's just an FYI.
Yep. Um, a couple other things, kind of just to note, uh, in November, uh, we're presenting the details on selling of the reserve engine that we've had, uh, 31-2. It's a '05 or '07 engine on GovDeals. Myself and Assistant Chief Sean Barrett met with, uh, Chief Stanek from Sharon Township and Larry Walters, the chief of Medina City, to discuss mud rescue. They're both a part of the Medina County All Hazards Team. Uh, we met with the Metro Parks, as well as I said, um, and Chief Stanek from, uh, Sharon was a member of the Summit County All Hazards Team, and they actually participated in a mud rescue in Kendall Lake. Uh, we, the technical rescue team has secured a air knife, which is just a big, like, small, like, one-inch diameter air cannon and a hose, and I talked to service department about, they have a tow behind compressor that we'll have access to when needed. The Metro Parks has the wood already staged for us, and then they'll be bringing additional trailers and resources. Um, we started building the response plan outs. I have a rough draft of it. Um, but we will be calling in a bunch of different agencies right away to get manpower. And the Metro Parks has already said they will be sending out their dive team because they have some flotation devices and stuff that'll help in the events of it. Um, just so everybody is aware, they have put, they're putting more signs around that area, and it is an ordinance, so they can't ticket if they see people down in the mud trespassing and all that. And to my understanding from them, talking to the EMA, if we activate the team to have to go and get somebody, there can be recovery costs for manpower, vehicles, and everything else that goes with a, a mud rescue. We've watched videos and it doesn't look fun.
Um, thank you for doing all of that, Asher, working with them and keeping us updated on it. I know we talked about it, um, two weeks ago at the last meeting also, so, thank you.
I know. I've been monitoring online. People have been going out there. Myself and, uh, my son went out yesterday, and you could see footprints right on the edge, and we're, we were trying to pick out different objects out there. So it's just, hopefully, no, we don't have to.
I can't wait.
The, the individuals, uh, like, four or five years ago, she was in the mud, and it was up to chest, and the, they had to put heaters around her to keep her warm because it was temperatures like this. The mud was cool, so it was drastically cooling her body core temperature down. So it's not just, hey, it's gonna need a lot of resources. It can be deadly. Uh, next is, I just want to let you guys know, some of the police officers and the service department are coming down to the fire station tomorrow along with other mutual aid fire departments. We have the electric company coming in. They're gonna be doing a two-hour presentation on hazards associated with, uh, electrical hazards, wires down, and they have a big, huge trailer they bring out that they can, it's set up, you can see what the, their, their whole, the power poles look like, and they actually energize it and show the arcing and sparking, and they actually will make contact with it, typically with a hot dog or something, to show how disastrous contact is with the electric company. So we'll post some videos and pictures on our social media through the Firemen's Association. And last, uh, yes?
Real quick before you leave that, uh, I understand Mike's gonna stop over, which I think is a good thing.
Yeah.
That they're up there and working.
Yep, exactly.
Did you open it up any further? Is this first energy?
This first energy, yeah.
Okay.
We, we opened it up to the fire departments around us and the police department, since they're responding, you know, they're, they're running into hazards. But we did, we have members from Granger, Brunswick Hills, Brunswick City couldn't send anybody. Richfield already had different training going on, and Sharon's sending some members as well.
Very good, thank you.
Yep. Um, and last but not least, December 17th is our Santa Claus parade, Christmas parade. We'll have more details coming up, and the route will be posted in the coming weeks, once we finalize the details for that.
That's all I have.
Very good.
Thank you. Always a big hit.
It is. It's a fun, it's a fun time for sure.
Mike did not have anything. That's why he is not here this evening. We'll go into zoning. Melissa is not here. She did give me the third quarter zoning report indicating that for the third quarter, they collected $14,004 in fees. And the, any additional information anybody wants to see on that is available through the zoning office. I will leave these other two for her, for, we'll table those for a future meeting. I'm not sure what they refer to. Cemetery. Trustee Augustine also gave me the third, uh, quarter cemetery income statement. Third quarter fees collected are $6,609. Again, uh, any other information, you could get that through the admin office through, uh, Suzanne Peterlin. Trustee Augustine also has on here about, uh, quotes for, uh, restoring Maple Hill. We'll put that on, and we'll table that as well until she returns. And the trustees, we have, uh, a motion. Would you like to make that?
Yeah, I don't have it written. Do you have it written down, like, the exact wording of it?
The, the resolution number.
Didn't we want to excuse Jess? Chief Gressenbach?
Ready to go?
Emma, yes, please.
Hang on a little longer.
No, thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Throw something out there next time.
He's just sitting there. Have a good night. Um, I don't have the exact wording from.
In the meeting minutes, if you look on the email, when you sent the minutes. Uh.
Yes.
Yeah. We'll find it there. Or, oh, here you go.
Oh, we don't, I was.
We don't have those.
Resolution number.
Well, you didn't, you didn't make a resolution, actually.
Oh, they didn't?
You made a motion to accept a breasy bid of $237,270 for the Bethany Lane Road Improvement Project pending prosecutor approval. Is that the motion you want to rescind?
We will move to rescind that motion.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. No. I will call the roll on that. Asher?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes.
For the public to be aware of that, we are rescinding the motion, um, the resolution, sorry, that we just made approving the bid for Bethany Lane, um, from the advice of the prosecutor. And then do we?
Going down through these? I don't, do you have any info on any of these that you want to speak to?
Uh, well, do we want to reject all bids then? Do we have to make a motion to reject all bids, or?
Follow-up?
I don't know. What did he say?
That was.
That was his, the recommendation.
Okay, then make that, then.
We'll move to reject all bids from the Bethany Lane, 2023 Bethany Lane Road Improvements Project.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. Well, Sweattick, yes. Asher?
Yes. Um, the only two things that, um, I can speak of on Melissa's agenda was the Hinkley Elementary meeting discussion, which kind of goes into my November 7th meeting. I had said at the last meeting, I had to check on my, um, availability for that meeting, uh, for the Hinkley Elementary, and I had emailed both you and Melissa that I could not do the meeting on the 8th in the morning. I will actually be out of town. Um, I think you.
I, yeah, subsequent to that, the day after that meeting, I advised her that I had items come up on either side of that date as well, so we would have to, I think we have to keep the November 7th meeting.
Okay.
That would be my recommendation. We can do Hinkley Elementary at another time.
Sounds good.
So would that, would that be in the?
It will be in the senior room.
And senior.
In the senior room. Which I will email Suzanne to let her know that it's gonna be November 7th, normal time, at 6:30 in the senior room. Um, and then the Google Drive discussion, I'm not sure if you had watched that last special meeting we had, that Melissa had brought that up.
Um, I did.
Do you care to have any additional discussion about it? Do you, do you want to remain what we had all agreed to the week prior with doing the Google Drive or taking Suzanne's recommendation and not doing the Google Drive?
I'd say let's, let's do that collectively. I'll say wait on it right now. We'll table that for now.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with it either way. I, but, uh, it's my understanding, you talked with somebody else now that supports doing it, so we'll, we'll get, get them all involved and figure out what to do. As a matter of fact, I, I wouldn't mind having a work session at some point in the next week, week or week and a half. Uh, we could do that, and we could, I'd also like to get together and, uh, finish up the employee manual, too. So we could put those, both of those things on and have a discussion where we don't have to drag everybody through the mud on it.
So you're looking for a work session?
Yeah, so think about that, and, uh, we can come back to that.
All right. I will, um, have Suzanne send out an email to all of us asking, um, availability for, like, end of next week, or?
Yeah.
Yeah. The week of the 30th is a bad week for me, so, all right. I'll send an email to Suzanne and ask her to reach out to everybody.
Pretty good.
Work session. Are you going to be in town next week?
During the week, I should be.
Okay. Till like a Wednesday or, or a Thursday or Friday? Okay. All right. So then just move into me.
Yes.
With the trash survey results. Got back 8% of the surveys that we sent out, and of the 8% responses of the overall community, 195, so a little over 70% responded saying they wish to remain single hauler. Um, overwhelming majority, more than 75%, said that they would like to remain with a five-year contract. And the people who have, um, opted out, that responded to these, 67 of them have opted out. 209 had not. So.
Other respondents.
Others, uh, sorry, other respondents. So actually, I'm kind of, like, that number really surprised me. I figured everybody who has opted out or tried to opt out would have submitted the survey, but it's nice to know that apparently, um, there's only 70 people that really are not happy with the single hauler trash. So I think that is definitely the overwhelming response we were looking for. We, looks like we will be, uh, putting these out to bid next summer, um, because we will remain single hauler in the township.
What surprised me is I thought the overwhelming number of respondents would be, they don't want to continue. And it was over 70% of people who did respond. So that, that is actually pretty surprising.
I, I agree. I was, those are the ones, I think you actually commented on that and said, oh, we're gonna hear from them. If they don't like it, we're gonna hear from them, so.
Okay.
All right, and a reminder for everyone, all 67 of our residents that choose to opt out, um, that is going to be open on November 1st from 9:00 AM through November 3rd at noon. So if you wish to opt out, you can fill out that form that was in, uh, the mailer that was sent out, and you can email that to, um, admin@hinkleytp.org. It's on the website. Uh, the Christmas photo contest, we have submitted that ad to the Hinkley Records. That will be in the November, uh, Hinkley Record, and that is people who are decorating their homes for Christmas that would like to be showcased on our website. You can send us a high resolution at, um, admin@hinkleytp.org. We're gonna have the kids at the elementary school vote on the best decorated house, and they will be the cover story of the Hinkley Record in the January edition. Uh, John Colesaviri contacted me from The Greensmith, asking, uh, where the exact location that we're gonna be planting the memorial dogwood trees. So Martha and I already discussed that you're gonna send me Linda's email, and I will send her an email tomorrow and get that, um, location for him because it is officially the fall when they wanted to plant them. And that is all I have.
Okay. First, I will move to pay the bills in the amount of 61, $61,234.20.
Second.
Seconded by Asher. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I will now move to amend the motion to request appropriations of $6,000 to cover uniforms and equipment for new hire, promotion, and normal replacement of uniforms at police to include Shuttler's Uniform Incorporated as the vendor.
Second.
Seconded and amended.
Seconded and amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, work for you, Martha. Okay, very good. Having had discussion and, um, the resolution that we had at the last meeting relative to the on-ramp discussion on 71 over in Brunswick, um, there is information about the different layouts of builds that are available there, and I'm gonna ask, uh, trustee Asher to have the admin office. We can post these on the website for anybody who's interested in looking at them. There's, it's telling about where, where it's located and the impact that it may or may not have on the township. So I'll provide those to you.
Okay.
On October 4, I attended an ODOT meeting for Medina 71 and 271 Planning Studies stakeholder kickoff meeting, which was virtual. They're looking at the possibility of a connection from 71 southbound, uh, to 271 northbound and vice versa. Right now, 271 just goes south on 71 down, uh, towards Medina there. So doing that would alleviate traffic that comes up through and across Waymouth there. So they're, they're talking about looking at that, and they're also looking at, uh, improvements on the interchange areas of 71 and 3 and 271 and 94. But it was a very, very preliminary meeting. It was basically to get all the stakeholders online and introduce them and, and just get a little bit of feedback from them. So as that progresses, I'll give you additional information as it becomes available. The old Fire Bay East Wall restoration, renovation, rather, uh, the bids for that will be advertised this Friday and will be due at noon on November 9th with the opening and selection of a contractor on November 9th at 1:00 PM. And I will also provide some information now from the, uh, engineer's office of Medina County. The Hinkley project for Valley Brook Oval and Salem Court Entrance was approved by Medina County engineers, and the next step is the application for the OPWC grant specific to roadwork. And we're gonna have the county handle that, uh, application for us. Just to clarify, these funds are only available for roadwork. There's different pots of money under OPWC, and that's where this money is coming from, and it's a grant as opposed to a loan. So I wanted to update you on that.
Jack?
Yes, ma'am?
So did, was that your motion to go out to bid for that project?
No, that's, that's just to have them submit the application for the grant.
No, no, for the West Wall.
West Wall? No, that's, that's for them to put the, uh, advertise the bid.
You need to make a motion to do that, though. You need to make a motion to have, I was just looking to see if you had done it the last meeting, but you had made a motion to pay the architect.
I did.
Oh, okay.
You, you have not made a motion to go out for bid.
Move to have, uh, Makovich and Pusti Architects Incorporated advertise for the, have the actual language for that.
Yeah, and then you'll just put the architect's estimate in there.
Thank you for catching that. Just so you know, this woman is greatly underappreciated. Okay, move to have, name the different place every time. Move to have Makovich and Pusti Architects Incorporated advertise the bid for the East Wall, the old fire station repair and renovation project with the architects estimate, and the, uh, Gazette on Friday. Making sure. Friday, October 20th, with a pre-bid meeting set for Thursday, October 26th, and bids due on Friday, November 9th at noon with the architect's estimate of $110,000.
Did you say 1:00 PM or never be open to 1:00 PM?
Uh, bids will be opened at 1:00 PM.
With $110,000 estimate?
Estimate, yes.
Okay.
That was a very, very messy motion. I'm sorry. Seconded by Asher. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Are you done, or do you have anything else?
Well, that's not hanging on a high note, but yes, I'm done.
Okay, because I have something else.
Please.
Um, I just got an email response today, actually, from Jeremy at ODOT regarding the email that I had sent about the traffic study at 606 in Stony Hill, and he said they are not doing it again. They did the traffic study in 2020, but they also just did it again in 2023 in response to some residents who had emailed them. And then I know that Melissa and I also reached out to him, so they did another traffic study in 2020. So they did another traffic study in twenty twenty three of this year. And they said they're not doing another one right now unless something has radically changed with it, which I believe is not.
It's not the case.
Okay.
Right.
So I tried. Shot and missed.
Very good. Anything further?
For the second time? No, that's all I have.
Anyone from the public? Can you use the mic for the virtual audience? Name and address?
Lisa Rushworth, one thousand six Malice Road. I don't know if y'all watched the zoning commission meetings on online, but they were doing a review of the section four dot eight nuisance language. One of the things that had been brought up is that there's very little that they actually have in the way of enforcement in the zoning. And their recommendation was that the township trustees, as they have authority on under Ohio Revised Code, section five zero five dot one seven two, um, to make, I don't know exactly what it's called, a resolution to control noise in the township. And that that we would bring that to y'all. Uh, and so here we are. Um, I I don't know if y'all are familiar with some of our complaints that that are, you know, more specific to a class D liquor license holder, uh, but also in the zoning commission meetings, some people have come forth and and kind of asked them about putting some language in to control short term rentals like Airbnb. Um, and while I I could see that some of that concern is just it's a little unsettling that the guy next door is different every weekend. A lot of the complaints around that seem to be centered around noise as well. That somebody's going to be running the house out for the weekend to have a big party, bring a lot of friends over, crank the stereo in the backyard. And so the power in five oh five one seven two given to the board of trustees to control noise within the unincorporated territory of the township that is generated at any preference to which a D permit has been issued by the division of liquor control or that is generated within any area zoned for residential usage seemed like it could be a way to alleviate some of those complaints. Because they are, you know, short term rentals of a residence would be in that residential zone use. When we'd asked previous board of trustees, uh, the answer we'd gotten back was that township didn't wish to do so because they did not want to maintain special equipment to measure noise and train individuals to operate such equipment, which I considered reasonable at the time. Um, after the most recent zoning commission meeting, though, I did some research on how other townships have implemented their noise control resolutions. And I actually don't find anybody who says, you know, thirty seven decibels or eighty seven decibels and has a dude out there with a machine. They tend to use language. The plainly audible is the term that's used in most of them. They then further define that. And as an example, Brunswick Hills defines it as any sound produced by a mechanical or electronic sound making device or instrument that can be heard by a person using his normal hearing facilities. The person need not be able to determine with particularity the type of sound, the words, phrases or lyrics heard and the detection of a and the detection of a rhythmic bass or other reverberating type of sound is sufficient to constitute plainly audible sound. The language used in these resolutions also typically restricts the regulation to the specific noises that the township is trying to address. Amplified noise, modified exhaust systems, engine braking, which they seem to call Jake braking, other nuisances that that have been specifically brought to the township. And then noises from desired sources, gunfire, hunting activities, kids playing in the backyard, church bells, you know, the the football game, whatever, are are often specifically exempted from the resolution. And I do have about sixteen examples of other Ohio Township Noise Resolutions that I can forward to y'all. Uh, if you're interested, I brought the Montville line just as an example.
Yeah, I'd like those if you could.
Yeah, if you could please forward them.
Like I said, I I put them together. Also, there was, I believe, Delaware, I don't know if it was Delaware County or Delaware Township that had a legal group provide them a kind of a PDF overview of what a township trustee's rights are that I wanted to forward along as well. Uh, but we did want to kind of, as a follow up to that zoning commission meeting, just encourage y'all to look at how other townships have implemented this and and the ways that, you know, it's it's not that I'm trying to stop everybody from shooting guns or, you know, sharing their sports team on. But the kind of strike a balance between allowing you to enjoy your property and and not, you know, disrupt the whole neighborhood. So I'll forward that along later this afternoon evening and thank y'all for your time.
That was the question I wrote down to ask you is what other townships around here? So yeah, thank you. I'll read them.
Anyone else? Last call.
You got the short straw? How you doing? I'm Ron Joyce, twenty seven oh nine Crestview Drive. Been there since nineteen hundred and ninety four. So it's been a little while. My question with the gas situation going on there with Columbia Gas, do we have a a final site plan on that?
I just received, I saw that something was sent to the zoning office this afternoon, late this afternoon. So I'm sure they haven't seen it yet. Relative to the driveway and the.
Correct, correct, or the setback. Right, absolutely.
The drive is going to go on the far side of the building now.
Okay.
So that that is a good thing.
Right, absolutely.
And but I don't know. I I think they're planning on putting up some fencing to obscure in that buffer zone.
Correct.
And but I don't know the status of the mound. I didn't wasn't able to.
And does that follow what we have for buffering for the trees, shrubbery? Is all that going to be put in there?
You don't have to have those. Those are all alternates that are.
Correct.
You know, that you can use, but they're going to put something in that follows along with what's stated in the resolution.
And is that going to be something that's transparent? Do we get to look at that before this happens or?
Well, yeah, the zoning office will, they'll have to tell them it's okay and good to go.
But we'll, I know because I live there.
So let me see if I'm understanding correctly. Would it be helpful if we get your contact information and have Tom reach out to you when he has that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
That would be great.
If you can see me after the meeting.
Okay.
I'll I'll write it down or Jack can do it. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can make sure that Tom reaches out to you so you see it.
Is there a reason there?
Public information, though, you need to be able.
That's kind of what I was thinking. I'm confused because everybody keeps saying it's a utility. They can do whatever they want.
Hmm, well.
Within limits.
Yeah, it has to be. It has to be necessary, you know.
Correct, correct.
So if they can do this and do it in a way that complies, then they have to.
Absolutely. And with the PUCO, so we are, you guys are certified building departments? Is that how you guys are classified?
We have a zoning department.
So you're the zoning department.
Building permits are issued by the county.
Okay, the site plan. So nobody has this, what it's going to look like? Is that normal? I mean, is that something that normally happens? Or is it because it's utilities? That we don't have to have a site plan?
We probably have it now.
But we, they've already started. From everything I've read, that should be done, set forth before anything goes forward.
Was that? That was not the plan. Right. I think I received phone calls from Doug, right?
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
This a new develop? This was not always part of the plan from the beginning, was it? For this dry, yeah.
Yes, it was.
It was.
What had, what happened? The existing pipe was abandoned. We, you know, you know that.
Right.
So they they have to put in this new one to supply gas when the temperature falls below a certain, I think it's ten degrees because of the demand. So there has to be additional demand to bring it.
Right, right.
And I think you're well aware of that portion of it.
Kind of. No one's told us anything. So that's what's confusing.
I mean, we had, we had, they came here and gave a full presentation.
And we got that five days late. In the mail.
That was.
That was, when did you, uh? Yeah, did you came down here? This was at a trustee meeting when they they.
Okay, we knew nothing about it.
Yeah, they he, they were here at the beginning of May. That's that's when they came and presented this to the township.
Okay.
Do you know how to put this up?
I'm not connected. Um.
I'm looking at it. Can you share my screen? Do you know how to do that?
No, you have to be logged into.
Yeah, I'm sitting right here.
Yeah, we have to.
Well, who said that one? That was nice. Wow. You know what? Wait a second, I'm just going to forward it to you and then.
Jeff, are they putting in a driveway or a building? What are they constructing?
It's a pumping station is what we're told.
Yeah.
And there's going to be a building on it, pipes.
And they'll also require, if they're putting in a new driveway, they'll also require a new driveway permit. Driveway permit would.
Yeah.
Going in the right of way, it would go through.
Are you on?
I'm logging.
Yeah.
The construction, the the structure would come through our zoning department.
And you guys do the driveways too, correct?
We we don't do driveways. That was.
That's confusing because they said.
Well, the county permit does the driveway permits because you're working within the right of way. So the Eastman area is part of the the county overseas.
Okay.
So the the only other thing, I'm, I'm Martha, who are you? I'm doing well.
I'm not familiar with the private jobs, so I'm just asking.
Yeah, I mean, as part.
Generalities.
Yeah, I mean, looking at this project, I mean, my, my, it's not my concerns just from from a gatekeeper is, you know, this is a pumping station. This is gas. This gets up to twelve hundred pounds and it's it's big. So from that perspective, do we know, you know, what the sound is like? So so he lives there is it can be loud. What's the lighting around it? Because you have to surround it because it is a pumping station of natural gas. There are emissions as part of that. Do we know what that is and how they've mitigated that?
And all those things are beyond the scope of what the township can regulate for a.
Not regulate, but tell us what's going on there. I mean, if they have emissions as part of this, we should know. I mean, the community.
Township, well, the because of the public utility, what I'm saying from the generalities that we're talking about, the only authority the township would have is if a structure is being built. And I.
Setbacks.
Yes, correct. And distances.
The zoning perspective of it.
Correct.
Location and use. That's that's what the township can.
Yeah, just like if you were building a house, your building permit would go to the county.
Correct, correct. But would I have not to give you a site plan, a final site plan?
Yeah, which is.
This is not a final site plan. This was for the water department from Medina County. I have the same thing you have. This is the concern is I came down here just wanting to know what the setback, everyone going to do the setback between commercial and residential. I dealt with this in two thousand with Mr. Livingston and the property owner at that time. And we came up with the solution. We made a swell between the properties using my dirt is dirt. We planted trees along it. That's our buffer when we go down Crestview. So I don't know where that went. And they said they're going to put the driveway eight foot off the property with no, basically no buffer. So I don't know. So if I came down there to ask for the site plan, there was no site plan. I go to Medina County, they don't have one.
Insight plan for a project of that that size. Jack, what's the gentleman's name that did come in May?
Ben.
Yes, I've been in touch with him. Right.
Because I would think that that's the individual that could answer all those additional questions.
So why wouldn't you guys? I'm confused.
Because we are just, well, again, I'm not familiar with the.
Right, right.
Know the gentleman that came in in May, but the township can regulate use and location.
And you guys felt this was a good use, this property for this?
Well, it's a public utility, so.
Okay.
So it's not, you know, the kind of.
Have you guys ever dealt with this before?
Well, cell tower locations.
That's right next to it. That was put in the twenty. Right. The twenty five foot buffer was, and that's what we agreed with with the cell phone people, Telkom, I think, put that up. Um, and we dealt with all that then. Yes, and he threatened me.
Well, that's.
Did he threaten me?
He just said he was going to walk your property, but if you add any violation.
Because the for for a building, if there's structure being built, what an individual has to submit to the township is a quarter inch scale drawing. Lisa knows this is fun. But a quarter inch drawing as to, again, location. Location, where it is fits in, what the what the use is, which would be residential or commercial or public utility, which is, again, a whole different ballgame.
Okay.
But a good neighbor works with adjoining properties.
Correct.
Too.
Which is what I told Tom. I said, you know, we can figure this out. I'm just worried about my buffer. And now I start doing some more investigation into this. Do we have the fire guy left already? The ESD shutdown, you might know about this. Has anybody been trained on this?
I cannot answer that.
Okay, so I just don't know. I can't seem to get any answers.
Relative to fire.
Sure, absolutely. Safety?
They'll they'll be on top, but I guarantee you that, you know, if if there's something there that they need to know. Ben has been very forthcoming in in working with me. I don't know. Like I said, I I I spoke with him on the phone and I said.
I have to, correct.
No, we need to get this done. He's, no, he wasn't happy about moving over. And I said, well, has he had an option to do it? And he said, yeah. And I said, can we do it?
Right.
And so at the end of the day, that's, they decided to relocate the drive to work with you and be a good neighbor, basically.
The trees and shrubbery, because he says that there is, I guess, looking all this stuff up for a pumping station. There is a clear fall zone. And that's why he doesn't want the trees. That's what he said. You have a cell tower right there. Stuff does can possibly fall off a tower that that height. So I don't quite buy that. All I want is a buffer. That's my biggest. I don't want to look at this.
Well, they're they're either putting up junipers. That's what we have up here now.
Okay.
And I believe there's a fence there as well.
If you folks look on your zoning permit schedule.
Yes, there's a privacy fence.
Multiple permits from that have been issued with the property owner being Columbia Gas. So there there will be information on file in the zoning office because we collected money. There's a permit number. I can make you a copy of this.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
But there's a permit on Crestview, there's two on Bevka. And this only begins on July third, so there could be prior permits.
Permits, okay.
Granted in June. I don't know for sure, but this just covers a three month period.
And like, you know, Tom, Tom is working with Ben.
Okay.
They're they're looking at every aspect of that resolution. Initially, they thought it was business to business. Turns out it wasn't.
Correct, right.
So, you know, if you look at that, he is now putting up a privacy fence, a vinyl privacy fence and including that by putting junipers around it. So.
Does it fit within everything with the zoning between commercial and residential? As it was written in two thousand, when we did that mound, that goes back behind the cell tower that they didn't buy.
Right, and the mound, the mound is one option. My understanding, though, with their SWIP, with a stormwater prevention plan, that they have to look at that. And he's going to, if he can keep it, he's going to keep it. But if he can't, they're going to have to remove it.
Can I urge that it stays?
Well, you can request that, yeah.
I mean, if we were, if we had been transparent.
I understand, I understand.
If we had been transparent in this whole thing, this wouldn't have been happening. You know what I'm saying? That's that's what's confusing because I dealt with this in two thousand with and here I'm doing it again. And it seems that's the reason I stayed where I'm at. So I I don't know why there was no transparency on any of this. Pretty easy to deal with.
Well, I don't think that was intended. Like I said, he he came to the township and asked, could he make a presentation? And he did. And as far as I know, that there was something that was put out there and they've been.
Ben's very good. I know people that work under him. I know people above him. And they all say he's very good. He gets what Columbia's gas needs or.
He's a trade shooter.
Absolutely. And he does his job, and he's very well at it. He's not an engineer. He doesn't do any of that.
No.
So I'm confused at how this buffer wasn't even considered. And you guys gave the okay for the location is what's confusing.
Yeah, but I don't know that zoning saw this piece of it until it had been.
Until I brought it up. All right. But how can that happen? You're the gatekeepers. You guys are.
Well, a- as they're going through the process, they're obtaining permits here.
Okay.
As it goes along.
But if it was me or you building, would you not have to have that site plan ready for everybody's approval? And what I've read, that's how it works.
They do, again.
It's utilities.
They didn't do anything until they submitted it. So it's not like they went, they're that mound up and.
Right, right, right.
Hey, you did this.
Right.
They're doing it in the right order from what I can see.
Okay, so you've looked at it and it's.
I'm 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 not over the zoning, Tom.
Right, right, right.
You know, so but from what I can see, as far as my involvement, yeah, they're they're doing the thing, taking the right steps to make sure that.
Okay.
Compliance.
All right. I'll take that for now. Thank you.
Keep the open dialogue with them.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, I mean, transparency is all I've asked for. I live there.
Yeah.
Ben doesn't live there. He says he's going to be a great neighbor. That's, we'll see, but it's.
Well, you, I, and I don't know if you know.
When this property was changed.
I don't know if you know that there will only be somebody at that property four times a year.
Correct.
Okay, that's the only time you'll see equipment or anything there, four times a year for them to do it.
Okay, that's the only time you'll see equipment or anything there, four times a year for them to do a.
We did that mound, I planted those trees, so I wouldn't look at anything, anything could move over here. I love natural gas, I'm not one of those. But I don't want to look at that, that's the bottom line. It took since two thousand for those trees to grow what we have right now. I don't have another twenty years of me, you know, I don't know.
Well, and just so you are aware also, um, Jack is not the liaison to zoning, so Jack's not looking over this all the time. But Jack has been the liaison for this project. And I know, I mean, when Dutch called me about it, I sent Dutch to Jack, and I know Dutch actually called me back and thanked me over and over with how helpful Jack was, so.
That's not what I'm here for.
Yeah.
Uh, I am worried after I started digging into the safety of it, I don't think it should be there.
Right.
Just because we're on a dead end street. Uh, I don't, you guys should do your due del- due diligence and watch you do it. Gas pipeline explosion, pumping station exploded, watch. I don't think we have much of a chance living. I really don't. And and I don't know how this, I know they're utilities, but PUCO, we've contacted them. You guys do have the control over. If it does not go the way Columbia Gas wants, it's called a a FERC review that goes up even higher than you guys or the county. And that's why I don't understand. Where this, you're the gatekeeper. Would you want this next door? I mean, that's just the question. And I think they came in because they're a utility. Nothing against you guys. I think, okay, they're a utility, they can do what they want. At least they're giving them a buffer. This should have been dug into a little deeper. If you guys haven't dealt with this, check with other communities that have. I think that should have been done.
Typically.
You need to come up to.
You gotta, we have, someone does the minutes on virtually, so.
I mean, just doing research on this, because I worked twenty years at Chase, and I built buildings all over the country and sat in a lot of zoning meetings. Typically, like with pumping station at, they're between three and twenty acre lots that you put these because, and I don't know what this one's like, what the compressed air is, but there's, there's a church there, there's a, there's a daycare center, and there's a community, and you look and you go, and if you look at it, these things go bad, and they rarely go bad, but when they do, you know, you have at least three hundred yards away from these. I mean, he's twenty-five feet. I mean, there's a lot of billing, so, I mean, I don't know what this is like. Ben said that they're different, and I I don't know. I just know past experience, that's all I can speak from. And they typically put them out in rural areas with at least three acres around them. You know, so just from from a gatekeeper's perspective, just look at that. You probably can't stop this.
I understand that too.
Yeah.
But I also understand when the project was broached, it was to continue service to twenty-four hundred homes.
Yep.
That that. I mean, they they don't have to do it, but then you run into the situation where when the the temperature gets low enough, those folks aren't gonna have heat, they're not gonna have adequate pressure there.
Oh, we love heat.
Yeah. But, yeah.
It's location.
All right. Joe Sorio, two six one one Crestview Drive. I'd like to touch for just a second on what you just just said about the 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 heat.
Okay.
The the gas, the pressure. Why did they lose their lease?
The company that they were utilizing is abandoning that line. I don't know, I don't know.
It's not a Columbia Gas line?
No, it's not.
But it was a lease through Columbia Gas?
I believe it was.
Okay. Um. Thank you for that answer. We requested that zoning inspector, Tom Wilson, uh Susan Peterlin, Peterlin, uh Ben Cutler, the public affairs manager for Columbia Gas and representative from Medina County Prosecutor's Office be here tonight in attendance. I was emailing, this is Augustine. I sent all of you. Ms. Catherywood, sorry. A bunch of questions because.
You sent it to us?
You were copied, correct. Um, I spoke with Mr. Wilson this morning.
Okay.
Uh, we thought a better option would be to come up here to get some answers. We know we're not gonna stop this. Um. We've, I've lived there for seventeen years, raised my son there. Uh, see neighbors come and go. Never dreamed of seeing anything like this at the corner of our street. It's it's, and if you haven't seen it, by all means, go over there and take a look right now. I know it's not gonna look like that forever. But at least for the next three months, it's gonna.
Right.
Um, and I can't imagine it being better for the next three months. It's just gonna get worse. I can't even wash my car and go out the end of the street without, you know.
Right.
Getting it filthy because of the trucks coming in and out of there. Not a big deal, I'll wash my car. Uh. Uh, anyway, we were told that none of the people that I just mentioned normally attend or are in in attendance. There's a lot of questions we still have. Um, and if you like, I can make a copy of the questions for you or try to email them again. But uh I gotta tell you, we feel that the townships let us down on this. We should have been, we should, you should have been knocking on our doors meant to think that you just put a bomb at the corner of our street. And if you don't, if you don't buy that, Google Columbia Gas explosions. You'll you'll see a list of wonderful things that, you know, these pipelines have done to neighborhoods. Um. Again, I I've got a lot of questions. I talked to Mr. Wilson this morning briefly. And he said he would try to be here. Obviously, he's not. But again, I won't take up any more of your time, and I would love for you to read my questions at least, and if you can respond to them back by email, great.
Do you have a date that you sent that? Because I'm not seeing anything.
I sent it Sunday. Um. Yeah, I'll try again. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no, that's not all I got. The safety thing, you know, and and I know you said you point, you pointed to where fire should be. Whoa, I mean, are they, are they on board with this? Do they, do they know anything about this?
I will certainly find out. I.
I mean, we're talking, like he said, fifteen hundred pounds of gas pressure? I mean, I'm I'm an operator and hit, have hit a a two-inch line in the past, and it makes a lot of noise without an explosion. I couldn't imagine what this is gonna be like. Again, look, look up the, you know, Google the videos. Uh. There're supposed to be tanks up there. Know anything about that? Tank separator, a scrubber I'm hearing? That may or may not emit uh radiation or hydrogen sulfide gas?
I have not heard that.
No. Okay.
So again, send me the questions and.
I will. Thank you.
Um, if you can hang out until after the meeting, I will write down our email addresses. I have nothing, and I just checked spam also. I did not receive an email from you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up and sharing your concerns.
I appreciate you listening. My wife was getting tired of it.
New audience, right?
Just so you know, you're not special, we all have. Anyone else? All right. With nothing else for the good of the order, I'll move to adjourn at seven twenty-nine PM.
Second.
Say goodbye, Asher Law in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.